All right, welcome everybody to the Curry County Board of Commissioners Administrative Workshop, Wednesday, May 18th, 2022. It's 2 o'clock or shortly thereafter. Like to call to order this meeting, amendment, approval of the agenda?
So moved?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Moved in second, all favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. The presentations are just discussion on generating revenue. We have Mary Rowe, I've given her first shot at public comment. But I want everybody to know that, you know, if you've got something to say. After Mary, I was going to ask Dan DeYoung to speak. He came over from Grants Pass. He's a sitting county, sitting, sitting bull, sitting county commissioner in Josephine County, and has done extensive work on a sale, proposal, on a consumption, sales, tax, whatever. He'll, he'll explain it. So, but then be sure, just get my attention or somebody's attention and I don't want to leave anybody out. This is not a formal workshop in that aspect. So if that makes sense, Mary Rowe, you are up.
I'm Mary Rowe. I'm here to speak about the request that Treasure Barnes made at the BOC special meeting on May 11th. A request for the BOC to contract with a marketing firm to assist our county government in acquiring citizen supportive attacks. There was very little specific information provided about this, as best as I could tell when listening to the horrific sound or lack of sound of this meeting on YouTube. I wonder just where the funding for this would come from. Our county does not have the funds. We cannot gamble money on such a large expense. I'm curious what research has been done. Will a request for proposals be put out when considering a firm? There seems to be a sense of denial about the economic crisis that we are in. I even heard one of the county commissioner candidates say at a forum with reference to our budgetary crisis, quote, "Money is not the problem. Money is not the issue." Further expressing that she, Beth Barker-Hodago, thinks that we can fund departments with grant money, which of course is far from being completely true. Well, money is the problem. Money is the issue. When last our county hired such a consultant firm about 2010, it took a great deal of money and we did not succeed in convincing the taxpayers. I have a records request in for the details. Currently though, I remember the effort and I think that about 35,000 was used from the general fund plus grants and donations, if memory serves. So this could cost us a great deal of money and would we even have time to submit grants to pay part of the costs between now and November? I think that our county officials need to communicate with and educate citizens. I do not believe, based on what I saw happen last time, that our citizens would respond favorably to what Treasure Barnes called a marketing firm. Please convey more information about this costly notion to the citizens before relevant meetings. Additionally, and on another topic, I want to say that I was appalled when watching the general meeting this morning, to see a commissioner be very critical of Roadmaster Christensen. And then for Mr. Christensen to not be given even five minutes, actually not to be given any time at all to respond, to accuse someone of something and to not be given a chance to respond is bullying. Please do not bully our county roadmaster. He works for the people of this county. This is our county government, the peoples. I want to hear what our roadmaster has to say publicly and believe that we have a right to hear it, given what was already said to him publicly. We, the people, have a right to transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. So Dan DeYoung, if you would, please, thank you for coming over.
You betcha. Thank you very much for allowing me to come over and speak. I'm from Commissioner Dan DeYoung out of Josephine County. Been a commissioner over there for five years, a little over five years. And just like Curry County, Josephine County, we're not too far off when we come to how to finance anything when we're locked into the 58 or 59 cents, whichever, whichever county you're in, to try to fund county government. When we collect all of our taxes over there, we get roughly 7.8% of all the millions of dollars that's collected for assessed value, we only get, we get about 7.8%. Because we collect the taxes, because you collect the taxes, every time you talk, start talking raising taxes, all of a sudden they say, wow, you know, I paid X number of dollars. Well, you write the check out to Josephine County. But the same thing here, we are collecting for the various taxing districts. We have 14 taxing districts in Josephine County. The two biggies are the schools and also the city of Grants Pass, we collect for them. So when people say they, they, this is how much I pay and I'm not going to pay anymore. And then they just expect county government to kind of pick out of that and make that work. And of course, I think everybody's having the same problem, our two counties especially because we're really joined at the hip in a lot of ways. We're kind of the ugly stepchild, if you would, down the southern end of the state and, and we don't get much traction up north. But, so we've been kicking around a whole bunch of different things. I'll start a number of years ago when we needed to fund our jail, the operations of our jail. We had a bond that the voters voted for to build the jail, but then they would not vote for a levy to operate the jail. So what good is it to have a 250-bed jail when you can only put 98 people in it because of staffing issues? After numerous, numerous attempts to get a levy to fund the jail, the operation of the jail, and I mean some high, heavy hitters, Chamber of Commerce, All Care, they put 70, 80,000 dollars in it. It just didn't work and they were always over a dollar. And then the sheriff came to us after I was on, on the elected two county commissioners about, you know, five and a half years ago. And sheriff came in right off the bat and he says, I need to have 93 cents and it will cover juvenile detention, not juvenile justice, but juvenile detention and the jail, operations for the jail up to 195 beds. And so he says, but I gotta have a levy. Well, of course, that's not real popular to go out for another levy after the other ones have been, been tanked. But we took it upon ourselves and, and I said, you know, I'm interested in it. And, and the board said, yeah, we'd be interested in it, but you have no money. Young, you want to do this, there's no money available. So you're on your own. So immediately I called in all the naysayers and found out what their, what their idea was. If it's not a levy, what's it going to be? And it was everything from collecting pine cones in Siskiyou National Forest and selling them on eBay for $5 apiece, and that's how we're going to fund the county. There were some pretty absurd things. And, and so we did settle on a levy at 93 cents and, and we just set forth and said, how are we going to pull this off? We have no money. And so sheriff and I put together a fact sheet. I think Commissioner Hertzog, you have a copy. It was just a fact sheet, a little trifold thing, and that's what we went out to. And the sheriff and I would go to, we'd go to churches and we'd go to town halls and, and everything. We had less than two and a half months to get this passed. And everybody said, you know, you're just putting another notch in the gun butt of the, of the naysayers. But we went out armed with the truth. We had no money. I ended up at the very end of it, putting in $2,300 of my campaign funds for radio advertising. Other than that, we had zero, no, we didn't have a sign campaign. And because we didn't have a yard sign campaign, then no people didn't have a sign campaign either until it was too late. They all of a sudden said, oops, these people have traction and they may just pull this off. And we did pull it off by four, by 4%. So that gave us a five-year levy and we just renewed that overwhelmingly by 78, 22 or something like that, just this last November. Now we need to fund the sheriff patrol and we have no money left in his contingency for patrol. He's going to be roughly, to keep, to get him whole, it's going to be roughly $15 million. So we said, okay, how are we going to fund that? Are we going to go out for a levy? Are we going to go out, are we going to form a taxing district? A law enforcement taxing district just for anybody out, just for the voters outside the incorporated. We have two incorporated cities, Grants Pass and Cave Junction in Josephine County. Do we stay out of those two? Because if you get into the taxing district and includes the municipality, municipality already pays for public safety on their own and they are never going to vote for patrol in the county. When they dial 911, they get a city police officer, they don't get the county. So if we're going to go outside, we're now at about a dollar and 40 cents a thousand. So now we have 58 cents locked in by Mayor Five, I think it is, as we're all both locked into. And then we have 93 cents that were for our levy for the jail operation. We're going to add another buck forty on that. How do you think that's going to fly? Probably not going to be very popular, but we still have a job to do, don't we? Because we're the Board of County Commissioners and it's up to us to figure this out. So I've been working on this for probably three to four years. I've been to AOC with it a couple of times, Association of Oregon Counties. And it's, it's a sales tax. And I, whoop, everybody's sales tax. And boy, they just erupt over sales tax because we all moved here from California. We know that it's going to be 3% now, then 10%, and then be 11, you know. But California gave the legislators the opportunity to raise sales tax. And here in Josephine County, we can't raise any tax at all unless it goes to the voter. That's number one. My proposal, and I've, I've, I've thought about it long and hard and I've given this talk, if you will, to a number of different organizations. And they go, you know what, that just might make sense. And I'm just going to go through it real quick because it's not, it's not a very long process. It's a 3% sales tax, 3%. We, we were trying to figure out what we need and, and I'll get to that in a minute. In Josephine County, we ran some numbers and we're getting some more numbers out of an economist that works for the state. Now first off, I want to guarantee you that there is no way you will ever get a sales tax statewide in Oregon. Because all the votes are in the north end of the state and the north end of the state gets so much commerce from Washington, they'll never do it. They want that Washington commerce. So they'll never have a statewide sales tax. We did call State Legislature Legislative Council Committee and we sent them a letter up asking, is there any prohibition on counties imposing a countywide general sales tax on goods and services? We got an answer back and it said, the short answer is no, there's no general prohibition, although there are specific prohibitions and limitations with respect to taxes imposed on certain goods and services. Alcohol's already taxed, cigarettes are already taxed, gasoline's already taxed. Some vehicles are already taxed through an excise tax or something of that sort. So we're, we're looking at those. So we just looked at nine counties derive their legislative power from Article 5, Text and Ten of the current constitution, home rule of counties, and we're one of those. Josephine is a home rule county. So we thought, okay, it's okay to have a tax. I don't want to go to the state for anything because the state wants their share. And our sales tax would be collected in Josephine County and stays in Josephine County. It goes nowhere else. We don't have to give 10% to the state. We don't have to give anybody admin costs, nothing. This comes up right from, direct from the people collecting the tax, that's the merchant, and direct to the county. Yes, sir? Yes. Yeah, and that, that came up because the Chamber of Commerce, of course, very interested or not interested, said, you know, I can't, and I had a friend of mine, she's a very dear friend of mine, and she's no longer head of the Chamber of Commerce in Josephine County. She says, I can't tax my, I cannot tax my merchants. And I, I didn't want to say anything, but I can say you because she's not here. And I, I thought, are you the only one in the room that doesn't understand that it's a pass-through for the, for the merchant? It's the end user that's going to pay that tax. It's the merchant that's collecting it. So we put 5% in there of the collected, we had 3% sales tax. They take 5% of what they're collecting and keep that. You know, we do that also with our lodging tax, the, the, the lodger, lodging people keep a certain amount of it. But in the short section, and I thought, well, you know, what are we going to do for our folks that live here? You know, they all, you know, don't like sales tax. Well, let's not ding them. So we said, let's, let's capture, we don't have timber anymore. We don't have mining anymore. We don't have an ocean. We don't have a crater lake. We don't have Brett. We don't have, we have marijuana. We have a ton of that and that slides under the radar with no taxes whatsoever other than retail sales. And why would you buy tax when you're, you just pick it from your neighbor? Just pick it off and smoke it or whatever you do with it. So anyway, we thought, why don't we do a seasonal sales tax? We're supposed to be tourism driven. Y'all are way tourism driven on the coast. It just amazes me how many out-of-state plates you see just traveling up and down the coast. And we thought, let's just kick this thing in April 15th. The 3% kicks in April 15th. The 3% kicks out October 15th. When the tourists are gone and also the dope growers are gone, we catch, excuse me, the cannabis community. We catch them while they're in town spending money on PVC pipe and, and plastic and nails or whatever else they buy. We catch them for 3%, which is all cash. They're all in the cash, cash world. We also catch the huge amount of, I, I hate to say it, but it's, it's the low income that probably shouldn't be on the take, but they are. We get a little bit of something, 3% from anything that's spent, basically. And we also get it from the folks that got a lot of money and we get it from the elderly, but the elderly say, you know, I, you know, I, I don't have a whole bunch and I don't buy a bunch of stuff. So the 3% probably wouldn't bother me. It would bother me a lot more if it were, if it were a sale, a property tax. I can count on that. But this, you know, I'll just wait to buy all the kids their Christmas presents after October 15th. Because the tax goes away, the sales tax goes away. What this also does is it moves your buying power from here to here when after the tourists leave, we're basically trading dollars. Our town just trades dollars with itself. We trade dollars back and forth, but we, there's no real fresh money coming in at that time. Agriculture's done, logging's over with. And so there's where we are and it moves that buying power into the winter times and the merchants like that. All of a sudden, I thought this may carry me on through. We put that 3% on just about everything that normal, normally would be taxed, but we also put a lid on it at $2,000. Okay? The lid means that if I go buy a riding lawnmower from Home Depot for $3,500, my tax is 60 bucks. 3% of $2,000. You go buy furniture at Gates Furniture for $10,000, it's 60 bucks because it stops at $2,000. And so that made, that's a, that is also a plus. Like I say, what is collected in Josephine County stays in Josephine County. And I'll use, I've got some numbers here that, that we use. We have this economist and he's supposed to get back, he was supposed to get back to me yesterday, but he hasn't. And we haven't been able to get a hold of him today before I left. But we figured somewhere in the neighborhood between Josephine County, oh, let me see how this is split up. So the, so the county collects the tax. I'll just use Josephine County for instance. We figured $10 million. In that five months, we collect $10 million. So where does that go? Our problem, both in the city of Grants Pass and the county, is law enforcement. It's law enforcement. Roads is all taken care of with gas tax. The parks are self-sufficient, on user fees. Most of all of our departments are self-funded. They're not in the general fund, but our, but the sheriff is. General fund is a hugey, biggie, and he's, and he's the big taker. And he's short. So $10 million, we were going to collect $10 million. Round figures because it's easy to calculate. We have two incorporated cities in Josephine County. We have Cave Junction on the way here and we have City of Grants Pass. The only fair way to split this up, because Cave Junction doesn't have police department. They couldn't afford their police department, so they disbanded it years ago. They are 2%. Their population is 2.3% of the population of Josephine County. So they get 2.3%. Talking to the mayor, I said, so you get $230,000, you have to use it on law enforcement. Don't buy flower baskets along 199. I want you to put in, it's got to go to law enforcement. She says, well, I could have two city cops for that. I said, if that's what you can afford, you're in. She goes, I'm in right now. I said, but I'm not done yet. But wait, there's more. There's a door number two and a door number three. The city of Grants Pass has an issue too with lack of funding for what they call public safety. Public safety is police and fire. I say this is only used for law enforcement. Fire, you're on your own. It's for law enforcement. Their law enforcement is short, $1.9 million. So I says, you know what, I'm going to write you a check for, they're 43% of the population of Josephine County. So they get $4.3 million. Jumped right into their general fund that has to be used for law enforcement. You can't hide that. You can't bury that, I don't care how good you are. You're not going to bury $4.3 million. It has to be used for law enforcement. That frees up money in the general fund to do other things. The 4.3 you used to pay in the, out of the general fund, now you can use for other projects. Because that's what, that's what it's for. So when you get down to that, it left about 5 million, maybe a little north of 5 million. It was 500,000 went, stayed with the merchants for collecting it, just like you asked. 500 grand stays right with that merchant. So $5 million approximately stayed with the Josephine County sheriff. Well, he needs 14, but at the time, he said, he was, hadn't figured his contingency in there. But he was going to get by for about, about $3.5 million. If I gave him five, he would still be able to have most of his patrol. He may not have 24/7, but he may have 27, something more along in there. So we're going to get to him and I gave him that and, and so to the mayor of, of Cave Junction. I said, you said you would be happy with two cops, but you continually bug me. When are you going to have 24/7 patrol? When does that sheriff get a pony up and read it? And we got, we need the sheriff out here because we've got all these cartels and we have cartels. And that's not a joke. That's not a myth. We've got some pretty rough customers in Josephine County, some very rough customers. And so anyway, he's going to be able to give 24/7 patrol, not just to the Illinois Valley and Cave Junction, but he's going to give it to, to Williams District and Provo, Murphy, Wolf Creek, Sunny Valley, North Valley. All of that now gets 24/7 patrol. So it bumps the whole county up and helps everybody just with, with 3%. And you can figure your 3% in your own household, how much you're going to spend every month and what it's for. You're going to gather from a lot more people instead of just property tax people are paying the whole burden. The better I make my house and the nicer house I live in, the more I have to pay. And I think people are, they're getting a little goosey about that. So it does, how many people can we get involved? I was in, and this kind of came to me and I'll just, I'm going to give you some numbers that I kind of got together for your county. But my wife and I celebrated our 50th wedding anniversary a couple of years ago up in Lincoln City. And we were eating at a restaurant, watching all the cars go by on 101. And I said, wow. Do you see that babe? How many, you seen how many cars? 40% of the, you see where 40% of the cars are from that went by here? She goes, where? Utah? California? Washington? I said, Oregon. She said, what? And I said, 40% of them are from Oregon. That means the rest of them are from somewhere else. And as they drive through, every time you see an out-of-state plate and you're, and you're a tourist, you're a tourist, whether you like it or not, because you've got that big, that big puddle out there that draws a lot of people. Do you want them to help you pay your, for your, your law enforcement needs? Or do you want to just saddle it all on yourselves? Because when they get the window broken out of it down at Hog Creek Boat Landing, they call the deputy sheriff and he's got to go fill out all the paperwork and everything for the guy's insurance company. And he walks, he's not, and he's laughing all the way to the bank because we have zero sales tax. Now $60 being the limit, that's very key. Because in Grants Pass, you're not going to spend $60 to go to Eugene to save $60 or Roseburg to save $60. You're not going to do it. So we've left it at $60. Keeps the people local so you don't get pirating. Now we're in a situation where we have Medford right next door. Jackson County is huge. People go to Costco. Talking to sheriff over there and Dave Daughter, Commissioner Daughter, and we had a heart-to-heart with them and the sheriff needs to have a jail. And they lost their bond attempt miserably. And I said, well, I said, just doing the math, in Jackson County, it comes out to roughly $28 million annually. And he says, ooh. And I says, maybe that won't buy your jail outright in four or five years, but it allows you to service the debt on a bond without going to the people. You're going to be able to have some debt service there, you know, because law enforcement is law enforcement. Law enforcement is very broad-based, so as long as it stays there. I, I used taxable sales at, at 3%, taxes collected countywide. And I used $6 million because I think there was three or four scenarios, I think, that you gave me, Commissioner, and I just took $6 million. Port Orford is 5% of your population is in Port Orford. So that's $300,000 for law enforcement in Port Orford. Gold Beach is 10%, that's $600,000. Brookings is 28%, that's $1,006,000. Merchants keep five at 300,000. Curry County then would get $3.1 million. And it goes into the county's law enforcement. I did this for Calamuth County because one of the commissioners over there was very interested in. And, and just to use an example, Malin and Merrill and Bonanza are on the very south end of the county, right almost on the border, little, little town, small town. And he's, well, that's not going to help them any. And I said, well, it's 80,000 for Malin, almost 80,000 for Merrill and 60,000 for Bonanza. They're not going to get a cop for that. But you could group those three municipalities, could group their money together, go to the sheriff and say, could you give us two resident deputies in South County? He goes, of course I will. Yeah, I'll do that. And so your law enforcement thing is still satisfied using this money. So it's just a concept in, in, you know, how do you go about this? How do you, you know, do you get butchered? You're going to get beat up for, you know, even suggesting that it goes on the ballot? You know, I think it's important to go to the municipality, to their, their city council, do a presentation very similar to this and say, what I'm asking you to do, do you think, do you think this has merit enough to where the people want to hear about it? Or do you just want to flat say no and not ever let them talk about it? I mean, I'm myself, I don't know about y'all, the more things I can put in front of the voter for their approval or disapproval, the better off it is. We had a Utah or Idaho thing on our questionnaire on our ballot. We got beat up to be, you don't want, you don't want to live in Oregon, DeYoung moved to Idaho, you know? It's an advisory question, non-binding. But I wanted to bring that to the, to the voter for their, you know, hey, check the box. It's better than a Daily Courier poll that you can keep pushing the button.
You had it on this ballot?
Beg your pardon? Yeah, we had it on this ballot.
Not by much either.
Yeah. And it was a, no, we don't want to go to Idaho, but it was pretty close.
It was close. It was within five or six points.
They were predicting that was going to pass.
Yeah, I think so. But there's a lot of predictions that go on, you know, with, especially with the phone. Everybody's got an idea about something. But, but basically, a lot of mouthoo is you go to the city council, say, do you think, if you think this is something worthy of going to the voter, all we need is a letter of, of recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners from Port Orford City Council saying, yes, we would like to see something like this on the ballot. And then you can hammer out. And the, the neat part, well, the caveats is that as Curry County, you make up the rules. It doesn't have to be 3%. It can be 4.5%. It can be 2%. It can be whatever you want because it's within your county. State has nothing to do with it. And they don't want to have anything to do with it. Herman Beartrader, you know, they use former Senator Beartrader, ah, I got to take this to the state. And I said, I don't want you to do that. But he did anyway. And the state, he came in, he strutted into my office, he goes, well, the state shot down your sales tax. I said, in what way? They don't want to have anything to do with collecting it. And I said, touche. I don't want them, I don't want them in the room. I don't want the state to have anything to do with it. And this letter then states that they don't want to have anything to do with it and that's fine with us. But they can't, we can do it locally. You make up your own, you get a draft together. I've got, and I've got a draft proposal from our legal that I'm going to leave with you. It's ordinance number 22, 20-22, an ordinance imposing a tax on retail sales. Very small, pretty, pretty succinct. Look it over, change it. You know, I don't want it on aspirin, you know? Well, you don't get it, you know, it says it, it's not on drugs or stuff. I don't want it on, on chicken wings, but I want it on chicken breasts, legs and thighs. You can customize this to anything you want and you just got to figure out what your nut to crack is. And then you can let the household person figure it out. You say, you know, at 3%, I'm going to pay X number of dollars a year. But you know what? It's, that money's got to come from somewhere or you're going, not going to get what they want you to provide for them. So it's just kind of a, and then it goes to the voter and the voter says, you know what? I've had an old grumpy old guy, he's run against me half a dozen times, named Bill. Lives out in Williams. And he, and he, and he says, I gave a presentation to a Chamber of Commerce Governance Committee. And he said, I never liked taxes. But he says, you know what? He said, maybe this is what we've been looking for all along. Nobody's had this, okay, we're only going to do it part of the year. And we're going to target basically a population. Your transient population, do you have a hotel motel tax here? You do? Okay, well, you're going to catch them there. However, and there you, you wouldn't tax them again because you've already taxed them once. You don't want to keep on with that. You don't really gouge anybody. You just want to cover, you got a nut to crack and you're going to figure a way to count it, to, to cure it. And in my estimation, you know, this is just one idea. I mean, I've got a, I've got a couple of, in our area, I've got a marijuana business, excuse me, cannabis industry business license. And basically recreation is done, their, their unit of measure is square foot of canopy on their registration, on their permitting, you know, their licensing. And recreation is square foot of canopy. So I said, let's go a dollar a square foot on canopy. If I have a thousand-foot greenhouse or a 10,000-foot greenhouse canopy, it's $10,000 per year. That's your business license for production of canopy. That's your business license for production of cannabis. I can't tax cannabis, cause that's state reserve the right to do cannabis all by themselves. The production's a whole different ballgame. You can do that locally. And then I, and so I had a, she's Amanda Metzger, she's with Farms Inc., which is rec grower. She says, I'm on your side as long as you include hemp. Hmm, hemp's your sticker, huh? She goes, yep. So you take a dollar a square foot for rec and then OHA, Oregon Health Authorities buy the plant for medical. You figure a plant is seven foot by seven foot property, ground, you know, footprint. So make it fifty bucks for, for, per plant when you apply for your ten plants or five hundred plants, whatever you can do, uh, medically. And then on, uh, I was talking to some hemp growers, it's been about a year before last. And I said, so we're thinking somewhere along so much an acre for hemp. And he says, how much an acre? And he had eighty acres? Eighty. And I said, just throw it out, five hundred dollars an acre. And he says, boy, make it a thousand. I said, what? He's making a thousand, we can afford that. And it goes to law enforcement? He's, yeah, we like, we, they need law enforcement just like we do, don't they? They're a pretty shaky business. You know, if you're a bank robber and you, and you wanna protect bank robbing, you need to protect bank robbing. But i- it's an interesting concept. All this stuff is interesting concepts and you've just gotta get really creative. Where, I'm, I'm interested and I've gotta sit down with, with y'all and figure out, don't you have a, a fee for people that own land in Curry County but don't live here? I'm interested in that, really interested in that. So we'll, we'll talk about that later. But so I think we really, you know, together, we, we're on the tail end of the state. I, I, you know, I don't know what we're, whatever we're going to come up with, and we've got two more, uh, two more town halls on suggestions, the pine cone thing's out. First off, you're on federal land and the pine cones are there to reseed. And you're gonna take the pine cones out before they have a chance to sprout seed, and that's not gonna work. And then anytime, anytime you're taking something off federal land, they wanna get paid for it. So the pine cone thing's out. And it was a suggestion, well, we'll take kids that are in juvenile detention and they'll collect the pine cones. I said, so you haul them all out there in the bus, you take twenty-two kids out there and you get four back, cause the rest of them scatter. And so, you know, that doesn't, it's gonna work. But it shows your thinking. Never ever, you know, some of this stuff gets pretty wild, but you know what? We may have to get a little bit creative or, or we're gonna be left behind. Sometimes conventional wisdom just doesn't work. Yes, sir?
So you haven't gotten this through yet?
No, 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 we're, we're still in the draft stages. We're, we're still in the figuring it out. Um, uh, we gave it to the city of Grants Pass. They're waiting for the numbers to come back from this economist. Um, because then they're gonna say, you know, okay, let's see what this can generate. Maybe we want three and a half percent. I said, don't get greedy. And then they said, well, in the city, why don't we just go three percent year round? And I said, don't get greedy. Figure out what your ask is and put a little cushion in there. You know, because the, the things aren't gonna get any cheaper, cops aren't gonna work any cheaper. So, you know, figure that out and then figure what you're gonna need. But I'd be really careful with, you know, you wanna cover a need. You're, you don't wanna say, and the, and the cool part about it is it's got to go to law enforcement. With the annual review and annual audit to make sure it did that. Our, we, we put that in on our levy for the, for the, uh, the, uh, jail, operation of jail. Every year we have two audits. One, the county's audit, which includes the jail. And also the jail has an audit all by themselves. And that was really good to go to the people at the end of the year during budget committee, say, yep. Here's our findings on the two audits, public knowledge. And, and you stay with what you say you're gonna do, because that's one of the things we've all seen it. Ah, yeah, well, you just want the money and you're just gonna do this, that, with, you know, you just gotta be very careful where it goes. And that's one of the things that I think levies and districts, we, and we talked about it, you talked about it earlier today. Um, that it's, it is, it's, it's tough for districts and tough for levies, but they are pointed at a specific issue. They're not just willy nilly, okay, now we're gonna put the flower baskets on the bridge like we've always wanted. And, and we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that. It is very, very pointed and very specific. This, law enforcement, that's our problem in Josephine County. I think every, you know, Clamath's got the same thing. We've all got a shortfall in law enforcement. And maybe this is, maybe this is one of the answers. I just want you to consider it. I thought, I don't want you to consider it. I'm bringing it up for your consideration. It may be something, I'm gonna leave this whole packet with y'all. And there's, uh, we also put a, a deal in there for our levy for the jail and juvenile detention. Just so, just that, and that one did pass, so just something to kinda look at the language on. But, uh, yes, ma'am?
I have a question. Now, you mentioned you had ten districts?
We have fourteen, fourteen taxing districts.
Okay, so those districts are set, the amounts are set?
Yes, yes. They have their own governing body. So we're not, we, we are not the governing body of a district. They have their own governing body.
Okay, so that's my question. Same thing with what's going on here, we have forty-two. So my question is, is there a way to put something on the ballot that says we can reconfigure those and put them where they need to be? For instance, you have a lot, we have a lot for fire, library. How can, we can't possibly put something like that on the ballot to say, why don't we look at kinda like Disneyland, you know, their own biological entity, they don't have to be accountable to anybody, which to me is kinda ridiculous.
Not anymore, they aren't. They are no longer the Vatican.
Exactly. But this looks like this is the Vatican here, it's, it's set. And some entities don't need that much, but yet it's set. So to put on the ballot, why don't we look at removing some of the special privileges that these have and putting them where they possibly need to go?
That's, you know, that's in our government, that, and
I mean, that could be put on the ballot.
Absolutely.
I, I think instead of
It's up to you. I mean,
We actually talked about that today in our meeting, and it is something we're going to look at. Actually Treasurer Barnes had an interesting, he said something to me, uh, to the board earlier that I actually wanna investigate, and that is could we add sunset clauses to existing districts? If the voters voted that in, you know, each district will, will, will be sunsetted in five years for reexamination. I don't know if we could add that in that language, but this is what's starting to happen now.
And, and I think
Finally getting traction.
People will understand that if they understand that we have a bill and we have this much money. And if we keep borrowing from here, we're not gonna have this. So I think if people are just honest with the ballot to say, we're not meeting our budget. But instead of taking more from you, this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna remove the special privilege sunset, whatever you wanna call it, and then we're gonna allocate those monies to someplace else. Like to me, the library, that's like a Taj Mahal in our, in, in Brookings. And it's got pornography, it's like, I'm paying for this?
Yeah, well, the district, if you were in the dot library district, yes, you are.
Yeah, well, that's
We, we, over in Grants Pass, we have the Grants Pass irrigation district, you know, and it's been there since the early nineteen hundreds. And I get people, I don't get any of that irrigation water. So you're in the district, then the district formed by the boundaries and anybody between those boundaries, the ditches were the boundaries. Gravity. And, and so when you form a district, it, we have a library district, it's a newly formed library district. And about three times a quarter, we'll get a list of properties of people that want to be put into the district. They want to be joined the district. And it's confusing on a map where all this district is, but once you're in that district, you're in it. And though, but the funds that, that you pay into that district, like animal shelter has a district, our animal shelter has a district. There's eight cents a thousand. That eight cents is dedicated to that, to that animal shelter. Now, I think where we're getting into, like, uh, Commissioner Pat says, I think what's coming up now is school districts is a really good example. School districts, your school district, they, they have less students now, because a lot of people's going to private school and whatnot. But you're still paying the same amount for that district when you are getting less. And maybe you, that, that school district doesn't need as much as it did before, so it really maybe should have a look see once in a while?
And that's what we're talking about is consolidating the five school districts that we have to one, and one superintendent. See if it'll run itself more
See if you can tell, yeah.
And then those are things that have, that actually has an additional stage, as you probably know, with higher learning would have to get involved in that as well. As the SWAC college, we're giving over two million dollars to a college in Brookings that does basically nothing or very, very little for this county. And we're actually, county council and I are meeting next week with SWAC to, or with, uh, higher learning to discuss. Rather than, than forming a new college district, could the school district, if we consolidate the school district to one, um, could the school district absorb the college into the school district and then make that a vocational training center?
Yeah. I think we're, I think we're in an atmosphere nationwide where we really need to take another snapshot. We're dealing off old Polaroid stuff when we could take clear, clear stuff with our phone. So I, I think you're on to something there. But that here, again, that's, uh, that's your local government. Keep that as local as you can.
That's not your local government.
Well,
That's state government.
Yeah, state government, yeah.
The changes you're talking, they're talking about that, cause it's constitutional stuff.
Right.
So, you know, I mean, yeah, you can change it and just take a vote of the citizens of the state.
They just have to know.
Not just the citizens of Curry County, no matter how much you want it that way. I'm the county assessor here, I've been the county assessor for, for quite a while. I tend to be more property tax driven because, at least for Curry County, I know how to collect property tax.
And it's solid, you have a number.
And it's not gonna cost anything extra to collect property taxes if we go that way. I'm not opposed to going with the, I like your idea. You know, my question for you would be, and I'm hoping you've got the answer that I want on this. Have you checked into the cost of administering, uh, consumption tax system?
Yes, we are, our treasurer has put one full-time employee involved in that, one FTE to do that. And people ask me, I say, well, you know, I don't know, you know, I'm like, boy, I gotta change all of my stuff. I says, you know, when you have a computerized program on your cash register for your business, when you're setting that up, you get down to the tax, cause we are one of three states that doesn't have sales tax. A consumption tax or value added tax, or whatever you wanna call it. And we, we had, uh, law enforcement, value added tax, LEVAT was our, was our kind of acronym, you know, so you're not saying tax, sales tax. But you're absolutely right. It's got, there is some admin fee for, for the county, but the county's gonna have that. That's part of it. That's all part of it. It's gonna have to carve, get carved out of that. But it was one.
I'm hoping you're checking with other states to see where their expenses, because my understanding is a big part of the bureaucracy for sales tax in other states is enforcing the fact that people make sure they pay.
Yeah, they make, they make their, they make their contributions, just like, and I was in business for, I don't know how many years, in the air conditioning business, heating and air conditioning. I, I wasn't any, it, I, it made me upset sometimes, see what the check was, but I had to write withholding for my whole company. And I had to do that reporting every week, every week. I had to go to the bank and was reporting. That's just part of me, to me in a business. And, and, you know, and when people ask me, says, wow, you know, how are we gonna do that? I says, you already do it locally. The city does it locally with their, with their, their lodging tax. I said, do you ever have to go out and beat up on West Pet, West, Best Western's door to get paid? And they go, no, uh-uh, no. Nobody stiffs this fort or anything else. It's just part of doing business. Like I said, we're one of three states that doesn't have sales tax, but everybody else does, and they just, it, just take it in stride. So that's, you know, and, and I'm no expert on this stuff. I, don't get me wrong. This is just a concept. There's an awful lot of questions that you need to ask locally to yourself.
Whatever research you've done is
Yeah, yeah, sure, you bet. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I just, I wanna say thank you for coming over and talking to us. I've been working on this for a while now and I, my goal in working on this was to have an impact on people up in County. But with so many tourists coming through there every year, it was trying, my initial thought was that we would tax things that only tourists, try to tax, make it tourist specific tax. So people aren't spending a lot of money on things. I'm, I'm listening to what you said though about taxing everything. I, I'm really liking that. My idea, original idea was to have a kickback where people in county would get back a portion, it will be collected. Applying out, that's not probably gonna be legal with the district commerce clause and other things like that, so.
I'd be careful with discrimination.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, but, but I, and I'm not illegal either, but
Right. Those are the things we brought up with that, but I, I am really liking the idea of a season. That, that to me is making a lot of sense all of a sudden. And what you said about increasing people buying out in winter to help with, you know, people who live here don't buy in summer, but they go out and they can buy in the winter. And it keeps cash flowing inside the county. I just, I wanna say, you know, thank you. I really appreciate, you know. I've been working on this for a while and I've been coming back to commissioners and everybody else with it. This is, that's an eye-opening thing that I hadn't really considered before. I, I also like the idea, I also like what you're saying about kicking money back to the municipalities towards their law enforcement costs out of this.
Right.
That, that, you know, that, that, all these things make this an easier sell for us to our own people.
Well, you know, we talk about it, we talk about it in Grants Pass, and they go, well, well, why should Grants Pass get such a big deal? I said, because you came and shopped in Grants Pass. They're providing the places for you to come in from Cave Junction to shop. But you need to get credit in Cave Junction, cause you are the shopper. Uh, you know, so it, you know, if, if you do it by population, it works out. And if you, you know, like for instance, Grants Pass spreads the urban growth boundary and more people now, this, they get a little bit bigger piece of the pie. Um, there's no guarantee the loose cannon is, is if, if tourism drops off, you're, it's not stable, like, you, you're absolutely right. Uh, property tax, at least the value is gonna stay, not the fair market value, but the assessed value isn't gonna go up and down. Rocket ship up and down like, like, uh, tourism could. But, uh, you know, we're just looking at a different wrinkle to try to get, uh, uh, something done and, and, uh, you know, it's just something to consider. And you can customize it any way you want. That's another key thing is just like you had a couple of questions there. Customize it, sit down. See what, yet your electorate is way probably different than the mountain people. You know, and so, um, you know, it, it can be customized.
You don't, where you are over there, you have Medford in between you and borders, and you don't really get a lot of cross-border shoppers. So here where we are, we get, uh, I've heard numbers up to forty percent of the sales kind of Brookings come from cross-border shoppers, because it's what nine percent down in California now.
Yeah. And they, and we, that was another thing we looked at. And, and years ago, uh, didn't mean to interrupt you, but years ago, when, uh, sales tax down there was like seven cents, seven percent. They come up here for seven percent. Well, it's nine percent now. They'll still come up here for six or seven, or if they make it eleven in Crescent City from some other tax. They're still gonna, they're, they're still saving the same amount, but you're leaving three percent on the table.
But gas, right, it's covered down, so are you saving anything really?
Yeah, yeah, and true.
Cause air gas is seven.
Well, I know, because on the way, on the way over, I called Wendy, she's, she's my right-hand person, and I said, Wendy, I just, I get the windshield time, we're still at fifty-six cents a, a mile of travel, I think, and I don't know who, who says that? If that's a state thing or a federal thing, whatever. But I said, this, this ain't handling. You know, I, I figured my mileage over and back, and I go, you know what? I just, I wear and tear on my truck for almost nothing. So that, you know, it's not just the gas, but the gas is gonna eat up what I would have normally considered wear and tear on my truck. But now I gotta put it in the tank. And when I get home, it'll cost me probably sixty percent of what I will get for travel over here will go in the tank when I get home to replace what I used to get here. So, you know, but we're all in this together. I, you know, I'm, uh, I've, and I've, I've offered to Commissioner Hertzog and, and your board, uh, you know, I, because, because I'm not from here, they're not gonna follow me home. Uh, my name will not show up in your, it can show up in your newspaper, but I, it won't mean anything to you. But I, I don't mind if, you know, I would offer to come and give a presentation to your city councils. And just ask, and then the ask is, you know, if you think this is something, and we're all talking about transparency. Transparency and boy, let's, why don't I get to vote on that? Now I want you to vote on this. I want you, and if I, and when somebody says, well, don't, I don't want you to put that on the ballot, you say, what are you afraid of? You, you're afraid that they, that, that maybe they might say yes, or that talking days, they completely blow it out of the saddle and we go to something else? What, what are you afraid of by putting it on the ballot? It doesn't cost anything. You got the ballot going out anyway. And it's just a matter that these three guys will refer it to the voter. And when people say, well, you referred it, so that means you're in favor. I says, no, 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 no. I referred it, cause I want to know what you think of it. I'm only one vote. You are the masses. And if you don't like it, like the Idaho thing, if you don't like it, fine. They said, wow, yeah, you're gonna move to Idaho. I worked in Idaho, I used to work on a big ranch in Idaho between my junior and senior year. Other than that, I was born in Josephine County. So I am an Oregonian. And, um, that's just the way it's gonna always stay, as far as I'm concerned, but that's the way it is. But I, this, this is just, it's a presentation and, and I appreciate your time, and you're engaged, and I like questions. And, uh, I'm sorry I was engaging your audience and not y'all.
I promise I won't give away your address, Dan.
What's that?
I promise I won't give away your home, home address.
Okay, yeah, don't do that. Yeah, don't follow me home, yeah.
Court's got a question, Dan?
Yes, Court. Commissioner, excuse me.
Yeah, I asked you, you can call me Court anytime.
I've called you other things, but
Yes, we have that
Yes, we have that relationship, thank you. You, I asked you to go over three or four years ago, and you were working on a, and you spent a lot of time in legislature as well, with the marijuana tax. And the, you know, the Southern Oregon concept, and we, we followed that for a little bit. How have you been able to tie that in, the marijuana portion, with this, with this concept?
No, because like I said, marijuana is basically taxed by the state. The, the product itself.
But at that time, you had a, you had a, you had an approach to, to overcome that?
Yes, I did.
And you spoke about it earlier.
And what happened is, is I, right off the bat, I said, you know what, there's money to be had in that community.
Yeah.
And so I put together a taxing, basically, it was almost like the business license that I just explained, except it was going to be a local Josephine County property tax, basically. And I was convinced I could have gone just a straight property tax, you're an assessor, and just say, you know, I can assess property tax and nobody can say anything about it. The state can't come in and say, you can't do that, because the county become, the property is the county. And so, but I was convinced, I was told, you gotta take this to the state. So Carl Wilson, who was our rep at the time, he says, yeah, let's talk about this. So I drive north to Salem, I meet with Carl, he helps draft this thing. DBS was in the room too, David Rockfuss was in the room, and we drafted this presentation. We got a hearing, we got a hearing, right off the bat, everybody goes, Dash, you've got a hearing on that right off the bat? Nobody gets hearings right off the bat. Well, we got a hearing, which meant there was some interest. I took it to AOC, I think you were, you might have been at that meeting, uh, one of our regular business meetings. Um, over half the commissioners in Oregon were present, and we did, gave a presentation on it. Uh, Rob Bobette, the, the attorney for AOC, and everybody in the room says, where do I sign? I said, well, we just kinda wanted five southern counties to try this out, you know, just that kind of a concept. Well, then, we had the hearing, and Wally, our, Wally Hicks, our county council, and sheriff and myself went up, and we went up to the hearing. The, um, committee gave unlimited time to the marijuana, what do you call them, I guess, advocates? You know, they were the ones with.
What was their acronym, or their son?
Activ, yeah, Anthony was there, and, and I think, uh, I don't know if, uh, I don't know if Peter General was there, but anyway. Um, and so when it was our turn to get up, David Brock Smith, Representative Smith, he gives an overview of what this is about, and I'm going, what is he saying? All of a sudden, it's a three percent export tax, I mean, it's off the rails, and I thought, what is he talking about? And, and Sheriff looked at me, Wally, who drew the thing up, goes, what is this? Then they only gave us two minutes apiece to speak, because I run short on time. And David walked out, I never saw him again, I have not heard one peep from him since, and I don't know what happened there. But, and then you go, I called Wilson, and I said, you know, are you on board with this? Will you help sponsor this? Oh, I can't do that, he's, I'm, I'm the chairman of the committee that's, uh, writing all the rules for marijuana, so I have to kinda back up. Well, he's one of our representatives, David, uh, Stark, Representative Stark, I said, Stark, you in on this? Well, I have to kinda distance myself from Herman Beartrager, Senator Beartrager, he and I were act, active club member. We've both been president of the Grants Pass Actors, puts on boat. And I said, Herman, you in on this? Well, you know, I'm kind of a, you know, I'm kind of a, uh, poison the well on this, I'm not well-liked up here. So how am I supposed to get any support from the rest of the room if my own representatives from my own district are not on board? You talk about a sinking ship.
Wow.
I went, y'all don't wanna do anything with this. Then just recently, we came up with a, with an ordinance that says we have citing, we want citing ability for code enforcement for illegal act structures, because we get these hoop houses up there, they pop up one after another, you'll have twenty of them within three days. Well, those are all greenhouses, and none of them are permitted, and you sell the property, I go, what am I gonna do with that? Well, we can't have, we wanted citing authority to be able to write a citation, put it in a mailbox, say, hey, five hundred dollars, five hundred dollars per structure. It's a fine, it's a ticket. Get it right, come in and get the permits, we wanna make sure the wiring's right and everything, and then you can move along. Nope, nope, we had, and who fought us on it? We passed it, we passed it two to one, commissioners. The commissioner that, that said no was Commissioner Beartrager. And here, and all of a sudden, here's Darren and I, we voted for it. And so we had second reading, first and second reading, and adoption. And as soon as we had adoption, the chairman of the Republican Party filed a petition against it to repeal it.
Wow.
I don't know.
You were getting too close to the sun there.
I really don't know, I said, what? And Senator Robinson, R. Robinson?
Yeah.
Was collecting signatures for the petition, I said, it's against illegal activity. It's illegal, the word illegal should be in big led, bold letters, and you wanna repeal that?
Well, he does live in Cave Junction, there.
Huh?
He does live in.
And I go, I don't, I, I don't get it. Well, they got, and they said it was because we were violating constitution, illegal search and seizure, and, uh, what's the other one? Liberty and pursuit of happiness and all that stuff, anyway, but, but, and they wrote it all out, and then I said, your punctuation's impeccable. Illegal search and seizure on, on their, all their handout stuff, and then it was quoted. You know, they write the illegal search and seizure, and then it goes dot, 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 and a quotation mark. And I said, what's the next thing? Why the dot, dot, dot? The dot, dot, dot in punctuation, which is the roadmap to the English language, says there's more in that sentence. And what's the next sentence? Without probable cause, the constitution has all that in there that you can't just bust somebody without probable cause or due process in the Fifth Amendment. Those guidelines are already in, you can't get that search warrant unless you have probable cause, or, and then you can't do it after the search warrant, just due process. You can't do it, it's already in there, and he said, I was unconstitutional, I was just fuming, so I just, but that, and that went down to defeat. Very close, I think it was fifty-two, forty-eight or something, to repeal it. But I called and I said, and this is the way it said, if you, if you wanted to keep the ordinance, you voted no.
No.
If you want to repeal the ordinance, you vote yes. So I call over to the Republican Party, I says, well, let's just, why don't we just cut through this? The Secretary of State says, don't fool the voter. The language has to say yes means yes, no means no. Unless this gets right down to it. And I said, so why don't we just put the ordinance on the ballot? And, and Darren Fowler, Commissioner Fowler and I wanted to put it on the ballot in November, after we see what it would do through the summer. Nope, we want it in May. So they put it on there, and I said, well, let's just put the ordinance on the day. Absolutely not. I said, hmm, and that's what happens. And we had one in, in Grants Pass, uh, the, our attorney wrote it backwards like that, and he said, that's the way I had to write it. I said, to win? Yeah, yeah. And I had people say, well, I don't want marijuana, I didn't want to grow marijuana in the city, so I voted no. Well, you just voted to grow marijuana in the city, because it's backwards.
That's kinda how that question was a couple of years ago with, uh, minimum drugs that you could keep on you, heroin and all that.
Yes, exactly, you, you're absolutely right.
That's how, and I, I think if they had a revote on that, it would be repealed.
Yeah.
Court has a question, Dan.
So far, the cities have been somewhat favorable, first question.
Big pardon.
Short, short answer, uh, so far, your cities, Cave Junction and Grants Pass have been somewhat favorable, favorable to your constitution.
They wait for numbers.
Okay, are they helping you pay for your jail at all?
Everybody pays for the jail because they're all in on it. See, the city, it was easy to get the levy for jail operations with the whole population of Josephine County, because city of Grants Pass arrests somebody, where do they gotta go? They have to take it to the county jail, if we don't, we're the, you know, the jail is our function.
But they don't have, they don't pay into that directly? And most, most cities, of course, don't pay into the jail expenses.
No, well, other than property tax.
And so we've looked into charging bed space for cities to pay in our jail.
That's all I have, thank you.
We started out, they, when we cut way back, because we didn't have the personnel, the city says, hey, we're, this is catch and release. Hey? We don't have, we don't have the personnel, it's catch and release, here it is, ah, wow, let's, we're gonna put a revolving door in with a padlock on it. And I said, there, there's nothing we can do there. And so the city said, how much would it cost us to rent twenty beds for a year? And dedicate those twenty beds, just like we rent, I think it's twelve or fourteen to the state. Oregon State Police, US Marshals have, uh, a certain amount of beds in our jail, they're reserved for them, and they're full all the time. And we said, well, let's see, just write out a million dollars. You write a check, the city of Grants Pass writes a check to the county sheriff for a million dollars, we'll staff that jail for twenty more beds for you. So you have twenty beds. And they did it. I was on city council when we did it, when I was on city council, it sounded like a pretty good deal to me, because rather than that, you go build your own jail. So we did that. And then when we, when we said, let's go operational and put the levy in, which would cover that, the twenty beds that the city had. And they put in, they had a little, I can't remember what it was, it was a dollar and seventy-four cents or something, uh, it, it, to collect this million dollar. They could do away with that if we did ours. So it turned out that everybody on board goes, that makes sense, let's do it. And so that's what we did. But that, you know, they do pay, they do pay.
Thank you, sir.
Well, yeah, go ahead.
I just, you mentioned something that I'm having difficulties with also, uh, getting numbers.
Yeah.
You know, I, I keep hearing from people, it's hard to drill down to find out what our economic activity is. Especially being down here, like you said, in the bottom corner of the state. We're having a hard time, what, how, what kind of, where are you getting your numbers from on your economic activity and?
I'm gonna see if I've got that paper that the guy sent down, because he was talking, I don't have it with me. But I'll see if I can get his name and send it over. He's an economist for the state.
Is it?
I mean, they, you know, they, they crunch these numbers and we can guess. I just, you know, when I'm talking to Jackson County, I said, well, you know, we don't know how much that again. I said, you know, if you wanna just take a litmus test, you know, check yourselves for COVID, why don't you go out to Costco and see how much three percent of total sales is in a, in a weekend? What? I bet you'd just be floored how much that is, Home Depot, Fred Meyer, yada, yada. And it's on, it's not on, it's not on, uh, raw foods, but if you go into Fred Meyer and buy a roasted chicken and some tater tots or whatever you buy through, out of the deli cabinet, that, that has three percent on it. But if you go buy the raw chicken wing, a package of chicken wings in the meat counter, that's not all there. Food isn't taxed, medicine's not taxed, yes, sir?
That was my question about food.
Yeah.
Where do we draw that from?
Um, and, and we are gonna put three percent on the restaurants, because we're following kinda, you know, Ashlyn.
That part I get, because most tourists are gonna have the money to spend at the restaurant.
Exactly, you're gonna, you're.
The restaurants a little bit, but I think people are still gonna eat at restaurants. I'm concerned for people that have, snap benefits and go in the grocery store, obviously you can't buy hot food.
Right.
With your snap benefits card, but that might be something you look at. We have people that don't have the kitchen, prepare their own food, they can buy raw chicken, but how they gonna eat it?
Yeah, that's, that, you know, there are gonna be people fall through the cracks, there are gonna be people that, that you're hitting the wrong guy, and the owner, the lease can afford it, and so on and so forth. But there's no way to customize it for everybody.
Residents in Curry County, we have a lot of them, I live in Port Orford, and I have lots of neighbors around.
Yeah.
We're tired of it.
Can't do, can't do groceries.
I'm gonna toss in on that now with their gas prices and everything else going.
Right, right.
Is that something that we can put down too?
I, it, like I say, it's customizable, you figure it out.
Groceries, you can't do groceries, I, I just can't see.
No, no, not groceries, no.
I'm saying, top of the year.
But, but like I say, if you, if you go to the deli cabinet and they've got a sandwich that's all made up and in the cell phone, and it's saying it's three dollars and ten cents, you're gonna have three percent on that. Ashlyn has had a, well, but I'm, use Ashlyn for an example, but Ashlyn had a three percent, uh, restaurant tax. And boy, their restauranteers just blew up over that. And two years later, when it sunsetted, they wanted, uh, yeah, it sunsetted, let's go five cent, five percent. They bumped it up to five percent because it did so much good. And it didn't really slow them down, Ashlyn didn't slow them down a bit. So that's where it goes back to the voter if you want it to, and if you don't want it to, you don't have to.
You have to buy through that part.
You'd have, this is all, yeah, this is just a concept, that's what it is, it's just a very rough outline, and then you all just customize. I mean, I build hot rods for, for a living, and I, what I think of and the colors I'm gonna pick for your car, you can't stand it. So I, you know, it's entirely up to you, but it's just a concept, yes, sir?
Do you, um, look, have, do you have a lot of Airbnbs and VRBO type stuff in your county?
Well, I'm gonna give you a little story, because cities and counties oftentimes don't get along real well, and I was on city council for eight years. And it was always, when the city and the county sat down at the bargaining table, the county's gonna get screwed. I'll tell you that right now.
You're here.
Because the city, the city, I don't know where they got this idea, the city thinks that the county people are part of the city, not the other way around. I have to remind them, I said, you, by the way, you are part of the county, we're the county seat, you're, you know, the city's the county seat, but we are the county, so. But, uh, we, just, and this is an example, uh, Grants Pass had a nine percent lodging tax. County had no lodging tax, no, no, uh, transient room tax, or whatever they call it, TRC, TRT. And so we said, we, why can't the county have a transient lodging tax? What we'll do is, we, why don't we go to twelve cents countywide? That would give the county three cents of what's gathered in the city, and twelve cents, the full twelve cents goes to the county outside the city. Because we have, we don't have hotels out there, we have air, we have bed breakfast, and Cave Junction has a motel, but it's, you know, it, it's non-functional.
Because you know, where, where we are, we have, I've been looking at numbers, and countywide, we're generating a million plus, a million two in TLT tax. But the cities themselves aren't, Gold Beach and Port Orford are collecting a quarter million.
Right.
Because we have the campgrounds and, we have a lot of campgrounds, and that's where we hit them on that.
Yeah.
Where I was going with my question is, one of the things I heard brought up recently, I believe our planning director brought up, was of exploring, putting a licensing fee on the Airbnbs that we have.
That's certainly an option, yeah. Licensing is really, that's, that's not a tax, it is, but.
Right, but you know, that's.
We have, we have a fee schedule we go through once a year. We have a date that we say you can't charge more for the bundle of firewood at our county camps, unless you bring it to the fee schedule, and we have to increase it on the fee schedule. But going back to it, we, we wanted to do that twelve, twelve percent. Here came the mo, hotel motel, I was chairman at the time, hotel motel people, the restaurateurs there, they came, boy, they come busting into the courthouse. We gotta talk. So we sit down in the conference room, and they absolutely, I couldn't sit down for, about a week and I could sit on one cheek. I mean, they ripped me a good one. And I said, okay, 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 well, you know, I'll, I'll bring up the board, and we retracted it, because it was just gonna be too controversial. We hadn't, the ink wasn't dry on void, and the city pops up and puts two more percent on their nine and went to eleven. And not a squawk out of the restaurant people and the hotel people. So I said, now, is that the way, and the city manager, I hired him when I was on the city council. I said, is that the way we're working together, Aaron? Why didn't you say, let's go twelve? We'll give you two, so we'll only take one out of the city and twelve out of the county, and you get to your nine and everybody's happy. We all work together, we all make some money, everybody's fine. Oh, I never thought of that. I said, that's what you work together, that's how the municipalities and the governments, the different entities work together. For gosh's sake, what the hell were you thinking? You left us out, so we're out. So now we can't go back for twelve, I guess we could outside, but anyway. I've taken up way too much of your time, I apologize for that, but you know what, I talked to myself all the way over here, man, it's good to see some smiling faces. Except for yours, Court. I always, you know, I always look at Court, I go, God, I'd walk backwards if I were you, Court. But I'm teasing, we're old friends.
All right, Dan.
Any other questions? And I'm gonna leave this packet with y'all.
Dan, have you checked with the Oregon Legislative Revenue Office? Used to be Paul Warner up there, and he did a lot of free work for Curry County four or five years ago, so he, he's not there now, he retired, but it was, it was free work. And, uh, what made me think to remind you, and, uh, Treasurer Barnes mentioned, uh, getting the figures. The state, the state has those figures individually for the counties.
Yeah, and I think we're just looking for fairly close, because they're gonna go up and down. But I, you know, I'd use ten million, because it's really easy, and, and people say, well, how do you know it's ten million? I said, how do you know it's not? You know, it could be fourteen million when the guy comes back, we don't know. And I says, and that's what the city of Grants Pass is waiting for. Uh, Vanessa Oger, she's a, a new councillor, and I was really surprised, because she said, well, you know, I just wanna know the numbers. I said, finally, now we got somebody that's thinking, because I wanna know the numbers. So we're working on it, we should have that date fairly soon, and if so, I can give you what our numbers are, and then maybe a, a, a name you can get ahold of.
Yeah.
And then, and, and go from there, because I think that's very important.
You've got some numbers, don't you, Dave? I mean, you've gotten some numbers through summer?
I have, there are two hundred to three hundred million, and I'd like to try to be a little bit more closer.
Yeah, okay.
That's a hundred million dollar spread.
Yeah.
And I know this is government, you know, billions aren't real dollars, but.
We had a finance director years ago that went to pick a like city in Washington. Said, okay, the, our demographics were. Said, okay, the, our demographics were just almost spot on. And then their tax was like eight percent. Well, what would be if it was only three percent? And that's where we kind of got an idea. But, but here, your hitch, you've got that big puddle out there and everybody comes to see it.
We got the big puddle and we got the people fifty miles south of here to remain.
Exactly, exactly. And that's why, exactly why Portland never wants a sales tax. But they would want a sales tax, the statewide sales tax would have to be eight, nine, ten percent. And that'll never fly because then you lose all your Washington. You would lose your California. But three percent? They're still gonna march up here for six percent savings. If they don't, they're, they may say they won't, but they will.
City workings charge a fuel tax and they, they make good money on it and nobody's stopping. Their two cents, three cents a gallon isn't stopping anybody who comes here. They're saving a dollar a gallon.
I don't know about you, but I don't know when I've ever called and the lady's, hey, you know, how much is a room? I asked a hundred twenty-nine dollars plus tax. I never say, what's the tax? Well, it's twelve, thirteen bucks. I never ask that. I never ask. I'm gonna stay there or I'm not. So I'm not gonna drive onto Roseburg when I'm dead on my feet. I'm gonna stop in Grants Pass or I'm gonna stop in Medford, I'm gonna stop here instead of going all the way to Coos Bay. So those are, those are just things that, you know, I think a lot of people talk about what they would do. But I don't, I know in reality if they would do that. You know, truthfully, you know, I've been, and I don't tell, I'm no rich kid. I've been broke more than once. I mean, really broke. I mean, broke, broke.
Okay, Dan.
But that's the way it is.
We're going in there. One more, one more thing before we leave. One of the things I was looking at was US Census data and it had your basic, it round numbers, Curry County, average household income, or average household spending is sixty thousand dollars a year.
That might be a good resource.
X amount of that is on housing, X amount is on entertainment, and it had a whole list of things. And that's what I was looking at, trying to keep the impact on household, to certain citizens at a minimum.
Right.
Was trying, it sounds like you're pretty much putting tax pretty much everything except for food where you are though.
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay.
And it services, you know, I was in the air conditioning business.
Okay.
And, and people say, oh, here you go again. I said, well, I saw a heat pump for ten thousand dollars, it's sixty bucks.
Right.
Cause we capped it at two percent, at two thousand dollars. And the city said, well, maybe we can cap it at three thousand. I said, don't get greedy, see what you need and then, and then cut, and customize it for that. Don't just keep tacking on because you think you're gonna get this all in one sweep. A lot of times you're not going to.
Are you able to do that for all load sales?
I had cars in that.
Still got the cap?
I had cars, it still has a cap at sixty bucks. And I talked to the bean counter from Lithia, cause I explained to her, she, ah, we'd never do that. We have, why? We have people that come down here to Lithia, Grants Pass from Portland, Oregon, and by golly, they buy from us because they like us and everything. I says, are you, did, did you take any kind of marketing degree at all? She, oh, yeah, I've got this. And I said, and you can't figure this one out? That you would send a letter to all of your preferred customers in Portland telling them that, yeah, you heard about our sales tax? Shop with us and because you're our preferred, you're our platinum customer, we'll eat that sales tax. Now, they're thinking you're gonna eat six percent of sixty thousand dollars, thirty-six hundred bucks, you're eating sixty bucks. You get, you get all the credit for doing very little and you're helping them out.
Okay.
Anyway, I'm gonna leave some cards and I'm gonna leave this with, with, uh, your folks and then, uh, we'll go from there.
Thanks, Dan.
There's a little, uh, here's a little PowerPoint that our sheriff put out. And, uh, one of the things that I think is very important, that the taxes collected here stays here. You don't have to share it with anybody. That's yours. You generate it, you generate it out of your hospitality. You're gonna find the people instead of, ah, grumpy, old, out of town people, you're going, you know, hey, welcome to our town. And you're probably gonna want them to come back because they're helping to pay. They're really helping to pay. Tourism is a huge industry and we don't have, and we all know this, what other industry do we have? We're not gonna get logging back. We're not gonna get there in the process of throwing a blanket over all of our natural resources. Anywhere on the, in Northern California, Southern Oregon, they're just throwing blankets over it. The Rivers Democracy Act, you name it. It is hitting us hard. We're not gonna be able to do anything but tourism. So let's figure out a way to capitalize on that and go from there. But it makes our, you know, they make our, our places a place where people wanna come. We're gonna, you know, we've got the wineries and stuff and so on and so forth, but we don't even have, we don't have any lakes in Grants Pass, or in Josephine County, except for Selmac. And I can hit a nine iron across Selmac when it's dry. But, uh, you know, let's just, let's get down and work on it. We have, we've got a lot to crow about here in Southern Oregon. We really do. And we just gotta capitalize on it. We can't be embarrassed about it. But you, you know, and then you talk to the people and you say, well, yeah, but I've gotta pay. Just say, yes, you do. But you don't have to pay at all. If we go to a property tax or we go to a levy, you will be paying it all as a property owner. You wanna partner in this? And the partner drives through here every day. It's like watching the water going by. We declare a drought in Josephine County. And my wife and I were sitting down there at the park one day and she says, well, ain't it something? I says, what? She says, God put all that water in front of us. We declared a drought and God put all that water here on earth. And it's the same amount of water we've had since the beginning of time. And we watch it go right on by. He put it, he delivered it right to us. We don't do anything with it.
I have one last question for you.
Yes.
Do you think it would be, do you have any thoughts on whether it would be beneficial if you're gonna get this on your November ballot out over there?
Oh, glad you got that.
If we were to do the same thing here, so it would show that, you know, all the, a couple of the staff here realize this and realize that we have to do something?
Yeah.
Do you think, do you, have you thought about whether it would be beneficial for us to be on there also?
One of the-
Same kind of question?
One of the two things that we have to deal with is Jackson County. Cause people in Grants Pass will drive thirty miles to save three percent. So I don't know if Jackson's quite sold on it yet. And we are, we're gonna have three more town halls, two or three more town halls on how to do this. We're gonna kick around a lot of stuff. But for you folks, there's no reason, there is a reason if you don't want to, but there's no real reason because you're not gonna get pirated from anybody. You are standalone. The whole coastal fact, all the coastal counties are standalone. You could do this up and down the coast and just absolutely be slaying. Because there's no, you, you, if you live up north, you're not gonna go all the way. If you might go to Coos Bay, but I doubt it. So. I don't think you would. But we, we really do need Jackson. Now, here's something, I'll just, I'm gonna be real selfish because the subject came up. I said, they, you know, why are you going over there? Why are you going to Curry? Cause I want Curry to do it. And you know what? Curry's gonna have, if this thing's really successful, you're gonna look at Curry and go, they fixed it. By God, that fixed it. And then I've got, now I've got an example, don't I?
Yep.
Now I got an example, somebody that stepped out because I, you know, we may do it in Grants Pass. I would love to do it the same. And I, you know, uh, Hertzog, no, it's Hertzog, excuse me, daughter and the sheriff, they said, we're liking this, but we don't know if we can pull it off in Jackson. And then they've got, you, have you ever met their city manager or their county manager? County administrator?
Andy Jordan?
Yeah. You ever met him? Oh, man. Talk about a ride in the woods. Anyway, he was absolutely against it because he's, he's, they're pretty comfortable over there. So they're not really in the dire straits that we are, and that's the sad part. We are, we're here because of our fifty-eight cents. They're two twelve. Give me an example, when we collect a million dollars in Josephine County, their tax is two twelve, two eighteen, ours is fifty-eight. So they're basically four times. When we collect a million, they collect four million. Their assessed value, and this is in your wheelhouse, is five times what Josephine County. We collect a million, they collect four million, times five. They collect twenty to our one.
Wow.
Just by numbers. And that's scary. So that, so we're kind of, we're out here, I think we're, we're on a ship all by ourselves with one oar. So we gotta probably try to share that oar and maybe, maybe we pull it off. I don't know.
We're running out of time, Dan.
Yep, okay. I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna give you my cards and I'm gonna leave this with you. Cause I gotta get back, I got two more stops on the way back.
Thank you very much for asking.
Thank you.
Come over and talk to our churches, okay?
What's that?
Thank you. Go over and talk to our churches.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, sir.
I don't even know if I can respond to that. Feel free to call.
All right, sir.
Feel free to call me at any time. And, uh,
and you're right, we're extension two, the Board of County Commissioners is extension two, and I don't know what number one is.
All right, Dan. Be safe.
Drive safe, bud. Who would like to try to follow that?
Dan, your pen.
Oh, he's good.
Too late. Put it in a jar, JJ.
That's a half an hour if you have to give him that pen.
No, I don't, I, I just, I thank you for bringing, for having him come over. That was very enlightening to me. It, you know, I've been looking at this in one direction and listening to him, it really just, it opens a lot of doors and a lot of windows for me to, in directions that we can take this. And I, I'm, I'm really happy to hear his enthusiasm towards this whole thing. And I, it just, you know, it reinvigorates me and I really hope that we can all come together and get something moving on this because I think it's a great thing. You know, it's, like I said before, it's our only choice, you know, and I just, I just thank you for bringing him over. That was, that was awesome. And I, I really, it was very beneficial to us all, I think.
You can tell he, he lives and breathes it. He has, he's-
Yeah, he's put a lot more time in this on I ha- than I have. And, you know, there's a lot of things I hadn't thought of, like going to the cities and offering them money towards their police departments and things like that. And I just, a lot, I think a lot of what he said here is stuff that we can incorporate into what we're doing and really help make us successful. And I just wanna say thank you for having him come over.
Chris?
And I think, you know, using the premise that he said, making law enforcement stra- stronger countywide.
Yeah.
And, and that, and the, the selling point to me on this is just what Brad said a few weeks ago at a, at a meeting. Gotta ask county citizens, you gotta ask yourself two questions. Do you want law enforcement? Do you wanna be protected? If you do, if you answer yes to that, how are you gonna pay for it? This is the way to pay for it.
You know, even the other day, last weekend in Gold Beach, the butt hut over here got broken into, three thirty in the morning. The alarm went off, friend of mine works there, she got the call and said, sorry, we don't have anybody we can send. You know, so, I mean-
The city of Gold Beach did?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, at three o'clock in the morning, s- sorry, we don't have anybody we can send over. So, you know, if they get a little bit of more money out of this and it can help them bring on another officer or something like that, then maybe they do have someone they can send next time it happens. You know, I just, I'm very, I feel very good about what's happened here today and I just, I feel reinvigorated and, you know, I, again, I can't say it enough. Thank you for inviting him over to talk to us.
Okay.
Perfect. Next. Feel free, just to, yeah.
Brad Alcorn, I'll just be brief. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody here for coming. And, um, thank all of you for having an open mind and, and being willing to, um, explore different options that will have such an impact on our, on our public safety. Um, I can tell you as a city council, city councillor, um, you know, the thought of getting a little over a million dollars towards our police department, our law enforcement is pretty enticing. And because that would free up other money to increase, you know, city services and, uh, and benefit the people in our cities. But the goal here should be, should really be public safety. And, um, exactly what Dave Mars- Barnes just mentioned, there was a recent burglary here. Uh, we're seeing those trends start to go up. We're seeing those, those types of crimes start to happen more frequently. And we need to be very proactive with this. I do think that there are some long-term solutions that won't cost the people who live here, uh, any money, which, which we discussed a little bit earlier, which is reconfiguring some of our special districts, reallocating that money. Um, but that takes time and it takes more effort. And this could be an option to bridge that gap. And, and I think the key takeaway from what the commissioner said was customizing this. Customizing this to fit the unique needs of this county.
Yep.
And, um, and I think we're, we're, we're off to a pretty good start in doing that. And we just need to continue to bring in the right experts, continue to have the discussions about what the people in this county need. And, and I think we can do this. I think we can pull it off. So thank you again for everything.
You bet. Who else would like to?
I'd just like to say also, David, if you'd like to, you and I could work together on this and get something for the June eighth meeting. We'll come up with a, with a plan. We'll work with Dan to get some more numbers on some things and we'll hopefully have something for the board at the June eighth meeting to consider.
Hi, Brett Cecil, Port Orford. Um, I just wanna keep in mind too, that there's been some suggestions around a county income tax.
Yep.
And I would like us for, to keep that in mind for our county. And I, I did forward, uh, it's a PowerPoint presentation that's been developed by some folks here in the county. And I sent it to the three commissioners this morning, so you can take a look at it. One of the things that I'm concerned with the consumption tax though is it tends to be a little bit, it disproportionately impacts some of our lower income people. And you can hear me asking questions about food and where those taxes are gonna land. So, cause even though they may be lower income, they don't stop having to purchase things during the course of the consumption period. So it tends to overburden some of the more low, low income residents. It can be a little bit costly to administer, and Dan did talk about that. I'm also concerned about forecasting revenue with that. What if, God forbid, we should have another, some kind of a COVID attack that we've gotta rein in our activities and we don't have the tourism that we typically do? Do we have some other means behind that to give us some backup if we should have any faltering in our, our, um, visits from folks outside the county? The income tax has a somewhat negligible cost to administer and enforce. The revenue forecasting's a little bit more accurate and easier to do. Pretty consistent income that comes across through state collections. Uh, and it doesn't necessarily directly raise revenue from out of county visitors. So, but as, as it's been discussed here, and I understand a little bit better, that's not necessarily a bad thing. To have users, people using the services and using our activities, have them pay for, for those activities rather than those of us in the county. So I just wanted to keep those things in mind and ask you to give the, the income tax, the county income tax a consideration as well. Thank you.
And for me, if I'm gonna consider this as a taxpayer, I believe if we're gonna do something like this, everyone that uses the resources of this county need to pay for it. That includes the residents and it includes the visitors. Because if a visitor gets stuck, a visitor gets robbed, a visitor has an accident, they need first responders somewhere, they are using the resources of this county that we pay for. So I, I believe everyone should use, should have to pay equally for the resources of this county. So a consumption tax like this, um, with limitations on things like food and that for people that have limited budgets, heating oil could be ordered a little bit later in the year. Those kind of things, the bigger electric bills are gonna come in the fall, which I'm not sure electric will be, uh, charged anyway. But, um, you know, those kind of things, um, they're gonna, they're, they're gonna be less impactful on seniors.
And you, what we did see during the pandemic is RTLT was up. So, you know, folks could come, you know, they didn't go on to Hawaii, but they came to Brookings and, and Gold Beach and Port Orford and up the coast. And it was easy to get to and, uh, the, uh, campgrounds were full. Um, my wife and I, with some friends go two miles every year to Harris Beach and it was full, even during the pandemic, so.
And the income tax part of that would go down because businesses are gonna close or, or use less staff and those kind of things. So the income part of that would, would, would retract.
Yep, he, he is the-
Absolutely.
Yep. Anybody else would like to, yes, ma'am?
I'm just gonna probably reiterate what we talked about with, um, the gentleman that was here is to-
Maybe just introduce, introduce-
Oh, I'm sorry, Athena Larter Lyons.
Okay.
And I think I've emailed all of you.
I spoke with you on the phone, yes, ma'am.
Yes, yes.
Yep.
So anyway, uh, you know, we've got this district and I know you guys are working on it. I don't know the specifics of it. So like I said, I equate it to Disneyland being gone. They get what they get. They're not responsible for having to come back to say, you know, whatever they pay, I mean, whatever they pay for, they pay for. And whatever they use the money for, they use the money for. So my thing is to, if that's a possibility to put that on the ballot to say, I know you're gonna wanna consolidate, but remove the special privilege. So I'm gonna repeat myself. Remove the special privilege so that they have to actually put out a budget of what they're gonna use it for. And then have somebody go and say, yeah, you need that for X amount. Uh, or no, you don't need that for X amount. So not just to give it to them because it's on here. That's what I'm trying to get at is they have to be responsible to the taxpayers for what they're using the money for. And if no one's making them responsible for it by just submitting a budget that we go okay for, that we're still gonna be upside down, that doesn't make sense.
They don't even submit a budget. But Ms. Lyons, I, I would recommend that you make an appointment with the county assessor. He knows a lot about special districts and how this, it's, it's, it's not a county thing, it's a, it's a state thing if I'm, it's a, whatever it is, I don't know that much about it. it is I don't know that much about it all I know is that it's not it once you have formed this it's you don't we don't just reach out as a county and say you.
No I'm just saying is there something you can put on the ballot to explain to people that this is what's happening and would you like to reassess special privilege for the for the districts is that something that can be voted on?
That's what I'd like to ask county council is districts already formed all these districts are already formed under the law can we ask the voters in each district to vote to to sunset those districts or re you know reassess them.
So there's nothing that we can do as a county it would have to come from within the district.
Right.
So either the district board would have to initiate it or the members of the districts would have to get together with signatures and do it so we couldn't force them to we could you know collaborate with them we could talk to them but in the end we couldn't just put it on the ballot say hey we're gonna do a sunset clause it'd actually have to be started within that district either with their governing body or their electorate.
So it's possible.
It's possible if they.
They have to initiate it.
Yeah.
They have to initiate it well they probably won't but can will.
Why would they?
Well exactly that's what I'm trying to say is so there's nothing that you can try we can try to convince these people that this is the budget or this is the budget this is the bill to try to help them to compromise to say wow let's let's see what we can do to make it like this.
Well and if you look at it from a humanitarian thing.
Uh-huh.
It is the right thing to do and that's what that those boards would have to be convicted that this is the right thing to do for everyone in the county and not just us.
So do they even know do these districts know their impact and that they are taking more than possibly they need?
Two years ago I had a meeting in Brookings.
Uh-huh.
With some of the district boards from the special districts in the county and they immediately sent all the lawyers down from up north from the special districts association and I was even told by a commissioner that I was dividing the county by doing this and that they literally ran me out of the building.
Oh. Court had a question just a second Jim Court had a question.
I think your point is the public is not aware.
Right.
In a general sense what we're up against here and so I think that's our job and I think that's something this board can do and should do.
What letter to the editor you know you got your thing off.
Well thank you.
And Jim had a question.
Yeah the thing that concerned me is is when Commissioner Herzog said that they don't even do budgets.
Oh well I mean they don't I I okay I apologize their budget doesn't come to us that's what I meant to say.
It actually does it's filed in the clerk's office and you can go over and look at it anytime.
But I mean it doesn't we don't approve it?
No they they approve.
So that so thank you for that but so I misspoke.
Most of these at the risk of being argumentative most of these small districts are doing a better job with their budgets than the county is and and the notion that this board of commissioners knows more and better about what to do with those small districts is a notion I'm not buying in fact you know and we're here today because we're talking about how can we convince our voters that that Curry County needs more money for law enforcement you know I I really think you ought to be working with the districts not coming in here and bad mouthing them and you are.
No I'm not.
Yes you are.
No I'm not that's your opinion and you looked right at me when you said that Commissioner Boyce has been talking about him today too so why do you look at me?
We've all said stuff.
My comment to you two years ago is how you went about it Commissioner Patch and we didn't get any good results from it that that was my concern and I defended you at that Brookings Elks Lodge meeting.
It's one thing to attempt to meet with the boards of directors of of those districts who are all people just like you and I I mean they're all citizens of this county they all pay taxes in this county and they all publish something about their budgets in this county in the newspapers so I mean the information is out there and it's available to the taxpayers but one thing to remember is the taxpayers created every one of these districts because they wanted a service now things may have changed you know I mean seems like people like to bad mouth the libraries because nobody uses libraries anymore but people are using the libraries I mean go to a library you see people in the libraries. You're acting like there's somebody in these in these districts that's getting rich over the fact that they continue to get money every year well you know they're using that money to provide a service some of them maybe are doing a really good job saving their money you know some of these districts are getting bequests from people outside the district of money to use for the for whatever district it is. I really think that when we're coming in here and we're saying hey we're gonna go tell the districts how to how they should do their jobs how they should spend their money we're sending the wrong message you know maybe maybe they're gonna wanna come up here and tell us how to how we should spend our money and and might be worth listening because some of them are doing pretty well on 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 their money management.
Chris.
Well I just wanna say that what you just said was they may be spending their money better than we are it's it's easy to spend money when you've been given this amount of money to to form a district and every year you are guaranteed that three percent raise pretty much every year you're gonna get that three percent and it's easy to run a business when you know this is how much money you're gonna have and every year you get a three percent raise and you're getting donations from different people in the county and all that I did go to the library district and and discuss it with their board didn't bad mouth them here I went to the to the library and I said you've got almost two and a half million dollars in the bank you see our sheriff in a situation law enforcement is is in the county why won't your or would your board be willing to do something to maybe find a way to assist in that and they said thank you very much for coming and we'll get back to you I've never heard from them again so it's easy to have a budget every year and you get your three percent raise and be able to plan your budget we don't have that luxury as a county because SRS money is only it's two hundred thousand short this year or Pilt money we don't get it this year or the roadmaster files for something on a bridge and that money doesn't come in for five more years or all these other covid hits all these other things happen to us so our budget is a much more moving target than a special district that's gonna get their tax revenue every year no matter what within a certain parameter so just to say that they do a better job at it than we do I think is a huge misstep.
Well we're here because we had we used we used to be a special district we used to get X amount of dollars from timber receipts logging in the national forests and and we're here today because we don't get those anymore and we gotta figure out a way to make revenue I don't wanna make anybody mad so I I really appreciated Dan coming over and and sharing that with us and Ms Rickert I you were gonna say something so.
While she's walking over I wanna say one more thing what happened in Florida a couple of weeks ago should be an eye-opening thing to the people of this county because if they can dissolve Walt Disney's Disneyland special district like that the citizens of this county can do the same.
Yes ma'am.
Courtney Rickert from Brookings I just wanted to comment just you know I'm from out of state obviously which you know sometimes isn't very well liked but I do have an outsider perspective you know coming from Utah there's quite a large population of children it's been shocking to navigate the school system and all the different you know education districts that there are and and how many overhead things there are with that especially the frustration with the fact that I reach out to them and they don't even call me back.
Cause you're are you you're a homeschooler?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah yeah but I hear this from people who who are working with the school too and so it's it's really a frustrating situation but it's amazing because I come from an area where in just the one city it's eight hundred thousand people in the county you're talking about over a million and there's two school districts that serve you know over a million people you had your you know the north end of the the Wasatch County you know so you had Salt Lake County and you had you know two or three school districts for that entire county then for the entire Provo County which was also millions of people one school district here we have five we have forty-two special districts so me personally as a tax-paying citizen you wanna pass a tax you wanna add more to it and you know just like the gentleman was saying here earlier you know we as the taxpayers look at it and we say well we're paying this much percentage you know and honestly one of the big polls people told us all the time was go to Oregon the property tax is higher and it is it's higher than it was in a lot of the states that I was looking at uh lower than California but the property tax was higher but there's no sales tax and that's what everybody said that'll make up the difference the income tax is higher through the state also but you make it up through having no sales tax so you know when you come to the people and you say okay we wanna institute a sales tax yeah they're gonna get upset especially if they don't understand that you guys are only getting six percent of what the property taxes are so to me yeah I want some accountability with forty-two districts that are getting their hands in this pot maybe some of them are doing a really good job of it of how they're accounting things but they don't really have to be accountable it's touted on some of the websites that I've read how they don't have to go through the bureaucracy that they can choose what they want and yes the taxpayers chose these special districts decades ago it's a different base now there are still people that are here from the beginning but it's changing it really is changing and people like me that are coming from out of state are going whoa you have how many school districts why you have how many of this why yes some of these services are really nice but are we just going oh yeah I'll take that service that service that service and then we're stiffing the county so that we've got these beautiful buildings that are the library and we've got these crappy jails I mean it's I look at that as the taxpayer and I'm going wow it's nice I like the library I use it my kids use it it's a beautiful building but did we really need to make it that nice could those could that money have gone to something else in the county so me personally as you know a taxpayer those are questions I'm gonna have and I would assume other people would have those questions too so I think there should be awareness brought about about these forty-two special districts because people don't understand that there's a ton of money going to them they think that it's all coming here and you guys are all just blowing it and so I think that it is good to bring that awareness and I personally would wanna look at a way to change it up too but that's my personal opinion.
Thank you.
Quickly Mr. Chair if I may.
Yeah.
All of the taxing districts have boards now that's that's our key to good communication I think these people are elected they weren't elected twenty years ago in a in a general sense also I've been very supportive of the libraries but I've also been very honest and and concerned and if if one library right now has some information that they they include in the context of their program and the board of directors agree that that's okay the general citizen Curry County is not going to accept it and I certainly don't accept it so there there's a there's a line in the sand here and I think I think we're gonna get crossed over that if in fact that is true that's deeply troubling thank you Mr. Chair.
You bet. Anybody else like to speak to anything speak now or forever hold your peace.
I'd like to ask the board one more thing before we conclude David and I are gonna work on the consumption tax thing before the next meeting would it be the direction of the board that I would recommend a sunset clause on the consumption tax of say five years while we work on getting special districts reduced or consolidated and then at that sunset if if there is still not enough budgetary you know way to solve the budget crisis at that time then the voters can choose to extend that sunset on the or would this board consensus be to just keep it going in perpetuity?
I'm I'm fine with five years.
Mr. Chair I think we're out of our league I think we're out of our authority there what we can do is go to the boards if we today.
I'm talking about the consumption tax.
Just the consumption tax.
Excuse me okay I'm sorry I thought you meant all the taxing districts.
No no no.
So would you would it be your.
So what is your recommendation again?
I'm I'm saying I I and I'm not I haven't spoken to David about it but I I would like to see the consumption tax that we are going to try and maybe push through to put on a ballot that that language in that question would have a sunset clause in five years it would end in five years.
Okay I'm fifty fifty for this reason I think if it's done right the people are going like Commissioner DeYoung said pretty soon the people are buying into it and they see the benefits it's gotta be the right plan though and that's why I've not wanted to rush it and I think we might be close but yet we're still a long way away okay fair enough that's just my opinion.
But I have a problem writing a writing a something like this without having a sunset clause and let the voters again speak in five years the voters can say we want this or not you know maybe the law enforcement isn't doing a good job which I can't imagine maybe they they feel like it's excessive especially if we can get consolidation in some of the special districts and have the districts vote and and have an access where we could form by then form a law enforcement special district that that consumption tax wouldn't be necessary and it would be usury to the citizens of the county especially those on a tight budget.
Mr. Chair my my position on that is too premature until we get the plan I I just don't see any benefit to that and I think it might send the wrong message my concern.
And I would you know that we got a few members of the public here what what do you folks think what?
Are you looking at the consumption tax for a period of time?
Five years.
Yeah but I mean the whole year?
No 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 part-time.
No uh October April through.
Seven seven months out of the year.
April fifteenth through October fifteenth is what he you know what was.
Food it would just be what it usually is. Is that in the city county everywhere?
Everywhere.
Yeah I.
Hotels.
No I I'm in I think it's such a good example for everybody else if we were to decide no matter what we come up with if we say at the time you know we're gonna put it we're gonna bring this back every five years and you're gonna re-up this we're not gonna do this just for ever in perpetuity I like the idea of putting a sunset on it and bringing it back for the voters every five years.
Well it only makes sense if I hate to even say the word we're talking about special districts to not not say five years because we don't want it to we don't wanna be part of the problem we wanna be part of the solution so.
So what will we do to the budget as far as when the budget comes are we still gonna be borrowing from the roads?
No.
No that's my goal is to make it so that we don't.
So that'll be done.
No more road fund dollars used.
Okay so in the same instance instance are we gonna be telling the people that we are gonna be working on so you know that five years doesn't turn into ten years turns into other things that we are gonna be working currently on the special districts so that by that time at least something comes like this the police the sheriffs get what they want the police committee get what they want and we might have a cushion to do other things with.
There's we I need we need to talk about what the special districts are and do and can and can't do because if even if the special district reduce their levy they're not allowed to give by constitution they're not allowed to give money back they are only allowed to spend their money within their district.
Are they go to the taxpayer?
It goes back to the taxpayer.
It comes back to you but it doesn't come back to it wouldn't come into the county it would go back to the taxpayers so.
And that'll be led by Citizen Advisory Committee Ms Lyons would be the president of that board all in favor say.
If it comes back to the people then you know it's an incentive.
Go ahead.
So my my opinion about about this is there should be a sunset clause there should be a time limit and the people should understand that when you communicate this whole process to them that this is to bridge that gap it's to bridge the gap so we stop using the county's saving savings fund and that the whole purpose of doing this is to to enhance public safety through this form of funding stop using our savings account basically while the three of you in conjunction with members of our community work to realign the special districts and do whatever it is we need to do to refocus the priorities of the special district funding that would be it and I think a five-year window is is reasonable. I think a five-year window is, I, I would expect there to be some progress made towards a realignment, if you will, of special district funding within that period of time. And I think for the people to understand and support this, that clause needs to be in there.
And then it goes 100% to law enforcement.
100% to, there's, there's several factors in there, 100% to law enforcement, it's going to be temporary in nature. It's you, being used so we don't have to use road funds. And the entire time that we're doing this, it is to realign, to reallocate this other funding so that at the end of the five-year period, this is gone and we've reestablished it through, and it doesn't cost anybody any money. That's my opinion.
Good.
Anybody else like to speak to that? Brett, you got up? You had a cane earlier today, so.
It's sitting over there, it gets in the way.
Sorry to interrupt.
For short trips, it gets in the way. I've listened to Mr. Cohen talk in the past few weeks about this consolidation of districts. It doesn't guarantee that the money that we would save by not spending that in the districts, that that's going to come to the county to be used.
It doesn't, no.
It's money that's not paid out by the taxpayer ultimately is what it is. It doesn't mean the taxpayer is going to give it to the county to do something else with, right?
Nope. I believe, Jim?
And my, my only other concern with, with the sunset clause on this, and I agree it should be looked at at some point. My concern with the sunset clause is what happens at the end of the five years if we as taxpayers say we don't want that anymore? Now, how are we going to pay the sheriff? Because now we've got the sheriff depending on a consumption tax that we just voted out. So, we're going to have to find another way to do this. So, I, I get the, the desire to have some kind of a sunset clause there, some way to revisit the, the ordinance, whatever we're going to call it. But let's be careful how we write that in. That might be, might be too soon, maybe 10-year would be a more advisable way to look at. And at the same time, we're going to have some other, some other ways to support our, our law enforcement in the county too. So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I think time is of the essence. You know, if we do a five-year, then we start working on it today. If we do a 10-year, we start working on it in five years.
All right.
I mean, the more you give, the more you can sit back and go, well, that'll, you know. Always thinking mine is your tax dollars, tax dollars, tax dollars.
Because you might be able to say in four years, we need to put this back on the ballot and ask you to sign it again or vote it in again, but this is what we have accomplished in the meantime. And, and it's two or three years from now before this can happen, so we're going to need a few more years. And that's how you redo it.
Well, we could even ask elections, you, you, the public, you get to vote on a five-year sunset or a 10-year, I mean. No.
No, I'd rather keep it clean.
I, I'd, I'd, I'm leaning towards five and, and improving that, that we can do something and, and that we're, we're not gonna, we're going to be transparent and.
That shows the public we're not sitting on our hands.
Court?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Three things, our ability to work with the taxing districts, to work with the cities, and to find a good plan, this thing will pass. If we drop off on any one of those three, I think the odds are not good, so that's going to be my focus. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
All righty.
We got to engage everybody.
Yes, make it clear.
Okay.
I agree with that 100%. Thank you.
Have you ever, have everybody's done? Well, yeah. Well, I. Yeah, I know, I know, but I think.
Well, the November election, there's going to be a lot more voters because it's, the primaries are never a lot.
I don't know, it might be easier to get 32% than 40, 50%.
Okay.
Yeah. Hey, I thank you folks for coming and, thank you, Dave, you want to, you got a question?
We got to go back into executive session.
We're gonna, we're gonna stick around because we love sitting up here. I, I gave it to.
I was gonna keep it, are you on it? Do you want to go through it?
Well, no, that's fine, that's.